It is 6:05, so I'm going to call the meeting to order. Can I get someone to make a motion to review and accept the agenda, please?
I move.
Thanks, Barbara. And a second by Greg. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay, thank you. Communications with parents, citizens, and staff. We haven't had any reach out comments. And is there anyone here to speak to us? As a board? No. Okay. So we're going to go by that. All right. So we need to have an executive session, and we're going to do it first tonight. So I need someone to make a motion to go into executive session, excuse me, for after making a specific finding that premature general public knowledge would clearly place the public body or a person involved at a substantial disadvantage relating to labor relation agreements. Can someone make that motion?
I move what you just said.
Excellent. If someone want to second it? Thank you. So we are going to go into executive session. I came out of executive session at 6:22. No action taken. We are going to move on to our global ends monitoring. We have a presentation tonight by Taylor Wedeman, Taylor Lampier.
Tyler Wedeman, Taylorland.
Oh, sorry.
That's getting to be very common.
Gosh. I'm very sorry. On our safety and mental health.
Yeah, so thank you. So when we're thinking about global ends and Otter Valley and really all of our boards being committed to student outcomes and having students that are prepared to be successful both in school and in the world, their physical safety and their mental health are obviously a huge part of that. So we have a presentation that's two parts tonight. The first is Tyler, who's our new director of safe schools, really talking about the physical security and what schools are doing to keep everyone safe and respond in crisis moments. And then we have Marcia, who you all know, our director of student support services. And if I didn't permanently remove her from the board meeting, Taylor will join us again.
The two of them said that the host has removed them.
Yikes. Taylor is our coordinator of school-based mental health. So you can go.
Okay. Let me just share my screen here real quick.
They should be able to log back on.
See? The host deleted them. Okay, so as Kristen said, we've spent, or I've spent a lot of time this summer revamping our security, safety protocols and procedures. The one here that I'm going to talk about first is something you probably are familiar with, Act 29. So on May 30th of this past year, or this year, our governor signed into law Act 29. There's three things in that that are important, two of which you've already worked through. First being, we implemented egress and options-based drills. So those are, we've always done egress, fire drills. We've done a certain format of option-based drills, but now they're mandatory. And basically what Act 29 says is that our options-based drills, you have to have one in the fall and one in the spring. We're going to do better than that. We're required in September, we have to do each, a fire drill and an options-based drill. Some of our schools have already done them. Otter Valley has already done theirs. But once we hit October, all the schools will be doing a fire drill, and then November is an options-based drill. And then you flip-flop from there for the whole year. Okay? So really, we're required to do two option-based drills. We're going to do more than that. And as we get further into that process, as we educate our kids more and our staff more, we're going to be, those scenarios are going to be more in-depth as to like if there is an intruder in the building, a chemical spill, something to that effect, and how do our staff members either shelter in place, lock down, or evacuate the building? So that's the first part. And that was a board policy to put in place. Second one is a visitor management system. That is already in place. That was already a board policy. We're bringing Raptor Systems, that's in all of our schools. And essentially what anyone does, staff member too, when they first came into the building, and visitors, you scan your state ID, your photo ID into the system, and then that goes into a database of all 50 states sex offender registry. And then also goes into Power School. So it registers with the Power School our student information system so that we know that you are the parent or guardian of that child and also on the contact list so that you can be in the building. So that's the second part. The third part here is a preview of what's coming, threat assessment oversight. So the state has let us know that they understand that threat assessments are happening more and more in schools, and they want some oversight in that. So what we're seeing coming down from Act 29 is that the state is going to have a model procedure and policy for us regarding threat assessments. Also, we're going to have to report out on our, how many threat assessments we do a year and what that looks like. I can tell you that our threat assessment procedure was looked at again this year and the summer, completely rewritten. And as of really yesterday at noon, the procedure for when you actually work with the kids, the assessment we do with the kids, that was finalized. There have been many different forms. And basically, there was already the Northeast form. There was a Virginia model that I kind of brought with me to this. And then there was Sigma. Sigma is a company that does security for assessment for schools. And what we're seeing is that Sigma is probably the model that the state's going to go with. Rob Evans, who's the state liaison to Vermont School Safety Center, he's a part of Margaux's Healy Security Firm. They did our security, our safety audit for all of our buildings. It looks like that they will go with the Sigma form, just because that's what they're used to and that's what the national standard is. Our form is very close to that, so even though we redid it for this year, it looks like we'll be aligned for that for next year, small tweaks. Okay. So other things this summer that we did, or that I did, was all of our buildings, we updated their emergency operations plans. Your materials you have for this board meeting has our external one for the district, which is more of a broad-spectrum report. It's not specific to any school, it's to the district or the SU. And what, the main part you want to look in that plan is it has all the threats that we've identified through the collaborative safety team that would potentially affect our buildings, potentially affect our buildings. Active shooter, fire, water damage, structural failure, hazard chemicals. And essentially, that's what our team came up with, and those are what we create responses for. I'll get more into the depths of that here in a couple minutes. Already talked to you about updating our threat assessment procedures and forms, and then also HHB and Title IX. So HHB, if you don't know what that is, that's hazing, harassment, bullying. And then also Title IX is sexual harassment. So those procedures and forms have all been updated and are being used consistently in all of our buildings. So I talked to you about, already about the EOPs. So the external one, like I said, is an overview. The internal one has different parts. Every building has an internal, or excuse me, an EOP now. They're very lengthy documents, about 100 pages. And the functional annexes up there, you see, are what we do in evacuation, shelter, famine reunification, continuity, I screwed up from last night as well, continue it.
Continuity?
Thank you. Continuity. I always screw that word up. Continuity of operations and shelter in place, security. Those are the specific responsibilities of our staff members to carry out in these incidents. Okay? And then from there, you have the threat and hazard annexes. Those are the same for every single building. So the procedures, how we react to a fire or a structural problem is the same in every building. The functional annex dictates what staff members specifically in those buildings, how they respond. If I lose you, please let me know. Our emergency procedures are on the back of our ID cards. Every staff member now has that, and you do as well if you've got a new card. Those are all of our procedures where if we run some kind of drill or react to an incident, these are the commands that our staff members are to know and our kids respond to.
Vanna.
Yes. And then, like I said before, drills and options-based drills. What we're doing is, I've already been going around to all the schools, their faculty meetings, and training our staff on these new procedures and forms. And then also our options-based drills, like I said, are, we give scenarios, and then our students and our staff respond to those scenarios, how they would best, you know, keep our kids safe. Threat assessments, so I went into before. One big thing that I'm working on this year with threat assessments, and you'll see for HHB here in a little bit, is transparency. What I want parents and our community members to feel is comfortable when they hear these things. It can be scary. When the administrator calls someone and says, "We're running a threat assessment on Johnny," because you might not know what that means. So I've created a procedure that is outward-facing for our community members so they know when we say threat assessment, they know exactly what we're going to be doing in that process, what communication you can expect, what we talk about with kids, and the outcomes from those. Also with threat assessments, I've found, is that all of our buildings were doing things slightly differently. So with that, with the new forms, the new procedures, common expectations are a big must and something I'm really on top of. Also, consistent training. Like I said, I've already, for in-service, I had a meeting with all of our counselors and nurses to go over threat assessment procedures and policies. And I had another meeting with them this past Friday to update our form, to make sure that we are the most efficient. And with all of these procedures we're talking about, all of these forms, they're all living documents. If we can make them better and more efficient, we will. And that's why, once our staff members start using these forms more consistently and commonly, we can make those tweaks so they're as efficient as possible. So the HHB and Title IX, like I brought that up before. Again, transparency with parents, I want to make sure, and with process that, I don't want to say common language, but we want to make sure that they are not threatened by that and that they know the process. Again, consistent training is a huge thing, make sure all of our buildings are doing exactly the same thing. Then, you know, we kind of flew through that kind of quickly. What questions do you have? There's a lot of information there.
I have a threat assessments question. And this goes back to last year when we had, you know, that difficult meeting about safety. My reading of this, and I want to emphasize that I know no details and, you know, am speaking based on, you know, people tell me and blah, blah, blah. But my reading was that the principal made a threat assessment that was very different than the Facebook rumors, and then later, when the police came in, they made a different threat assessment. And the principal was blamed for being careless and not informing people and so forth and so on. The question is, emphasis on consistency in threat assessments, which I think is great, does that extend to law enforcement as well? Is there, because I think we had, I think the essence of the problem last year is we had two separate systems. We had the school system, and then we had law enforcement coming in and imposing upon that at a later date. And that caused all kinds of havoc and misinterpretations and anxieties.
Yeah, I mean, law enforcement definitely adds another layer to the process, but we do have MOUs and we do have relationships with law enforcement. I actively talk to law enforcement and emergency responders in the area to make sure that we are on the same page. And they're very much part of our process, not another outside entity, if you will. We want to make sure that we are in line.
I have a follow-up question, which goes with that. Are they included in the option-based training? Is that what it's called?
Yeah, options-based training. They can be.
So do you invite them as part of that training?
Once we get further.
I mean, I'm thinking, if you have an active shooter, what use is that training if you're not involving the fire department?
Yes, I mean, they are aware of our drills, and we, obviously, we announce our drills ahead of time. We will get to that point, yes, where they are part of that.
And what districts try to do is invite law enforcement and first responders to tabletop exercises, which are different from our options-based drills, right? Like, a lot of times, law enforcement descending into a school in large numbers actually adds a lot of drama and alarm on the part of kids and parents. So generally, when schools and communities do those, they do those on the weekends or during vacations, time when kids aren't in the building, because it's really about what is our system doing, like what's working, what's not working. We know from the hoax incident, the swatting incident that happened at OV last year, we had state police and local PD that sort of almost ran into each other. And one of the reasons they almost ran into each other was because none of their phones and their radios were working in the cinder block that is Otter Valley. But so things that you don't know as an adult until something happens. So yeah, that's also on the.
Yeah, because I was going to say at the college, we had the same problem where that we couldn't talk to the police that were inside the library at the time. And so, you know, they swarmed in with lights blaring, and there was no issue, so.
And part of those EOPs have specific protocols for that, so that, say, incident command, you know, when law enforcement arrives, how does that power, that command structure that basically take care of the situation?
Yeah. I had just have a question about the options-based drills. So in a real event of an active shooter, apparently, teachers and kids, depending on what information they have, now have options.
Correct.
Can you kind of give me an idea of what that is? And are we opening ourselves up to any kind of lawsuit because we had an option-based and it was wrong information?
Yes, it's interesting to ask that question, because I had, when I talked with our Nashmi faculty meeting, that question did come up. Through training, through the procedures we talk about with staff, we are empowering them to make decisions in the moment. And with options-based, essentially, I always hate defining a word with the word, but it gives you the training to make decisions. So hypothetically, we have an active intruder in Otter Valley, okay, in the high school, and that person is here, in this room right now. Our staff would be in, our school would be in lockdown, and when they know they're in lockdown, they have options. Potentially, if you are over in the middle school wing, you might evacuate, because that threat is not close to you. So if you have the ability, evacuation is always the best option, get out and get away. And so what we're training our staff to do is that if they, and part of lockdown too, is if someone in the building or whatever, is clear directions, making sure that anyone who get on the PA system makes that announcement. There is a, you know, white male, jeans, t-shirt, black hat, you know, whatever size in the building, in this location in the building, that lets people in the building know where that person is, and they can make decisions based on that, whether to shelter in place, barricade the door, or get out.
What do we have to barricade the doors? I mean, I've seen, I've seen things, they got new things out now that on the inside, like basically, you cannot pry the door open. The metal things that fold over and lock the door from the inside. Just, they invented them since all this active shooter thing's become to light. Any of that?
We actually have those in a lot, we have those in a lot of places.
We do have those in a lot of places already, yeah. Kind of like a reverse door jam.
Kind of, yes.
Yep, yep. Also, I mean, staff members know that for barricading, furniture. You know, you're barricading against a door with furniture. Another part is, you know, countering. If possible, you know, anytime someone's coming into a situation, nine times out of 10, they have a plan. If you can confuse that person by, you know, throwing whatever at them, that's part of Alice' training, is to counter to, that can throw them off their game as well. Now, we have to be very specific here. What we're taught, we want to make sure that we're having age-appropriate communication. What we are talking with our kindergarten and our elementary kids is way different than what we're talking with our high school kids. So I mean, the practice is the same, the delivery is very different.
And the other part about Act 29 that I think we talked about last May or June, when we talked about it the first time, is not only are schools doing these drills, school principals have a responsibility to notify parents well ahead of the drill, so parents are able to have conversations with their students about it, and then after the fact, also have conversations with their kids about it. And then Tyler has also worked to create templates which give parents access to more resources if they have questions.
Jeremy, good question.
Yeah, when all these drills are done, are you then going through and evaluating the response to the drills? And then is there a?
We're having after actions, yes. Going through the whole process, breaking it down. You know, just today, I was at Lothar for their first options-based drill, and myself, principal, and their head custodian met in the office afterwards, in the main office, and we talked about what did we experience as we were moving around the building, and what can we make better? So yes.
Do you have somebody going through the building, like acting, like they're?
Not at this point, no. No, not at this point.
Administrators did that once, and it was very interesting to see what our personalities were in regards to whether we hid, ran, or fought.
That's not much, I mean.
It was very interesting.
You really think somebody's coming versus just, okay, let's hide in place.
We actually had Melinda pretend, one of us pretended, we did this drill.
I was there. I got knocked into the wall.
It was very interesting to see, because if you don't practice, you really don't know how you might behave. And then if you make a mistake, it's good, because then if it really happens, you might change how you would behave. That would be neat.
But I also think, and I think Tyler mentioned it, that they, this is sort of a slow progression of training throughout the year. How they're starting right now, they will continue building up on it as kids and teachers get a little more comfortable, because this is a change.
We're very much in education phase right now. Action phase will be more in the springtime of year for these drills. Jeremy?
Are you evaluating student response in addition to effectiveness of the various practices? Like if you, are you seeing whether, oh, the kindergartners were terrified, or are you just looking at, yeah, we got everybody where they needed to be at the right time?
I don't know if we're there at that point yet to really look at that, because we're so much more in the education part of this. But that is a good idea for, once we get down to more of the action part.
Well, especially if you're like ramping it up to things that could be perceived as more and more scary, it'd be good to.
And I, and that's a great point, Jeremy. And last year, for instance, the event that happened at Otter Valley, when it was happening, Otter Valley students and faculty didn't know that it was swatting, right? Administration and police started to get some information before Chief, however you say his last name, Chief Kay, was in the building, kind of going through with a weapon, and a lot of kids saw that. And one of the things that they thought after the fact was, our teachers didn't get an opportunity immediately after debrief. Kids didn't have an opportunity immediately after to sort of debrief and unwind, and it was really traumatizing for kids and teachers. And so that was also an outcome that Mr. Ruppel and I think Tyler have also talked about, is after an event, making sure kids have the space and the time to sort of talk through how it made them feel.
Have you thought about, not just kids, but parents, how they deal with the aftermath or what's happening during an event? Because I remember when, and I just have lots of training on this, I'm on the crisis management team and do threat assessment and everything, so I understand it. So when the kids texted me, I said, "I'm sure everything's fine." Right, I didn't catastrophize. And so I feel like there's a bit of training that needs to happen for parents as well and not just the kids and the teachers.
And we do have the safety forum on Thursday for families, and I think that, and we also, as Tyler had mentioned, have the collaborative SU safety team. Those are all things that we want, we want it to be very transparent. We want, if you have a question, you can go to the website and find Tyler's safety section and get all of these answers. But also, you know, these sort of conversations, can we run this sort of drill? Or if I'm a parent, you know, what are these resources? So I think that's, again, something that we're learning and tweaking. Just yesterday, Tyler got feedback, where are rabid animals in the emergency operations plan? And we didn't have them there, so now he's got to add that.
Yep.
Fernanda.
Yep, Fernanda?
Different question. I do know that the HHB investigations take up a lot of time. I'm wondering, do you guys have a dedicated investigator for those or principals? Who holds the responsibility for holding an investigation?
Each building has their own DEs and designated employees, sorry, and investigators. Typically, those are counselors and admin, but, yeah.
Nurses?
And nurses as well, thank you. Yep, nurses as well. It does take up a lot of time. And, but we're, our practitioners are very thorough in that process, so we're getting better at it, but it does, it does take up time. Each building has specific individuals that are responsible for that.
And have you looked at consistency of responses with those?
That is part of my job aspect for this year. One of my responsibilities, definitely, as we get into it. Obviously, our high school has, our middle and high school has more incidents of HHB than our elementary schools do, but that is something, yes, I will be looking into.
Thank you.
Other questions for Tyler?
Another question. Just want to say that I never enjoy reading school documents, but this one took me half an hour. I understood it, it was easy to follow, made sense to me. So good work, congratulations on that.
Thank you. Anyone else? Thank you, Tyler and Marcia.
All right, we'll turn it over. Marcia and Taylor. Taylor, Taylor's back. I kicked Taylor and Kate out, and they had to join from someone else's account. I will share my screen. There's so many windows open.
So good evening, everyone. I'm going to talk to you a little bit about our mental health services. I'll go over it fairly quickly, especially the middle slides, which just talk to you about process. You did get a copy of this, Melinda sent it out to you. If we look at national data, the most important thing to remember is that one in five children experience signs of a mental health problem, and that a half a million children have a mental health problem or need. We'll talk about our district response to mental health needs. When we think about MTSS, you've been hearing about layered supports, and you've been hearing about the right side of the triangle, the left side of the triangle, academics and FEL. This is a visual for you to see how mental health supports work. When we work ourselves up, I had it on my screen last night, and I'm sorry I'm older, I'm going to have to move forward to speak to you so I can read it. Can't see that far away. So if you look, you start with universal supports, that's what we call all of our supports in our beginning layer, that teachers are responsible for creating. You can see social-emotional learning, bullying prevention, school-wide social skills training, safe and healthy schools, and school-wide positive behavioral supports. Those are all school-wide or universal things that are all in place for the mental health of our students, and they're all teacher-driven or in the classroom to start. As we move up, we go to more teacher-driven Layer Two, where people might come in and help, where the teacher might spend more explicit time doing some of these things. When we move to Layer Three, we're moving to other people helping implement those tiered supports. And then Layer Four is our most intensive support. So you get to meet Taylor Lampier, she's on our screen, you can actually see her in the middle. She's a new physician this year, our superintendent, and you all committed to giving us a coordinator of mental health supports. She worked for Rutland Mental Health in our schools. She's now available for that higher tier. She's also available to help support our clinicians and case managers in our schools. Those tend to be entry-level positions with Rutland Mental Health. We have had myself with the contracts, but now they actually have a colleague who's a clinical expert in their area to support them, work with them, and work with Karen Grimm, who is the person that works with us from Rutland Mental Health. And Taylor, also herself, can be engaged in some Level Three and some Level Four supports to children. She might be involved if there's a threat assessment of a child who's struggling, and that child is having some issues being involved in the school, or so is their family. Taylor now can get involved with that team at that higher level and help make that connection happen, that child get more connected to the school, or she might herself actually provide clinical supports. So that's moving up the tiers. And that is Taylor right there, so. I didn't have her come. She's a mom, and so she's at home, and we can see her on the screen, and hopefully that's okay with you. I'm here to present. The referral process, if we can move quickly through these, this is just so you can see that we do have a formal referral process, we have contracts, we work cooperatively with Rutland Mental Health, and that is all done through a professional process. Want to go on? So that I don't want to know either, the problem solving. Well, Tyler talked to you about that. He talked to you about Raptor. So I just wanted you to know that all the people that work at Rutland Mental Health go through the same screenings and the background checks as everyone else to keep our students safe. So you can read about that, but I don't really need to talk about it. So if you look at MTSS and you think about our tiers, you think about problem solving. First, the problem is identified, there's analysis of the problem, the intervention is implemented, and the response to intervention happens. These are fluid, and they don't just go in that order. When you're working with students, it's fluid, it can go back and forth, or up and down, or over. Terminology to know, this again was just for you to know, educationally relevant, it means it's involved with the school, academic engaged time, AET, and then social-emotional learning. This is the most important slide, I think. So why do we have mental health counseling in the school settings? Why is it important for us to have our contracts with Rutland Mental and offer these services? Well, it increases school success, it prepares students for the challenges of the 21st century, it develops decision-making and problem-solving skills with students, it assists in developing effective interpersonal relationship skills, it fosters resiliency factors for students. Our resiliency factors are, we used to talk about protective factors with children, and if you could develop resiliency and protective factors in children, then their assets increase, and their inability to deal with things or their ability to deal with things increases, so their mental health is better. So if you can have more protective assets, develop more resiliency, naturally, you're a circle. As you are healthier, your mental health issues decrease. And then it assures equitable access to educational opportunities, because students who need mental health support to access their education need mental health support to access their education. In order to reach these goals, I wanted you to think about terminology that you may be more familiar with. So we know that if a student is able to remain within the learning environment, then that addresses their attendance and hyperactivity. addresses their attendance and hyperactivity. Or if we thought about it, truancy and inability to remain in class. If you can remain focused on the instruction, that's going to increase your concentration, so you can work on your concentration with your mental health counsel. You're going to interact with peers and authority, that's important, so that teaches you respect and social skills. So you will work on respect and social skills to be able to interact with your peers and authority if that's your issue, and follow rules in a way that allows the student to function in the school setting. That's, again, about behavior and accountability. So those are all areas that a student might have an issue in that can be addressed through mental health counseling, through our contracts. Communication is always the most important thing in all the work that we do, and providers cannot establish an effective treatment plan for school-based mental health without knowing how a student's issues are impacting his or her ability. Through our contracts, we're able to have a relationship and a communication with our provider that isn't one that is closed door, because we have a contract, we can share information. There's still some information that a clinician will not share with us because of their laws around privacy of counseling, but we will be able to talk about school, how it's impacting them, and develop plans together. So it's that excellent communication and helping the child along. We're in it together. So schools are not just a convenient location to render counseling services. Our agency partnership with our, it's a cooperative agreement. Rutland Mental Health and Rutland Northeast have the longest-standing cooperative agreement in the region. We have always had an agreement with them. I can't even remember when they began. We do that through our Medicaid dollars. We buy a service that if we paid for it ourselves, it would cost double. And through our sex, our success beyond $6, we are able to use our Medicaid dollars to buy this service. And it costs us 50% less, at least, than we would buy if we bought it ourselves. So you can look at other districts that might have their own clinician on site, you can look at what they purchased that for, and you can look at what we purchase ours for. So we do continue with Rutland Mental Health. This does help us with our coordinated service plans for children and our local inter-agency team for a higher level of care for our students, and I sit on that team for Rutland County. I'm happy to answer any questions about mental health services in schools. And again, thank you very much for allowing us to add that position, and welcome Taylor, and a thank you to the superintendent for seeing the need in that. It actually is a wonderful thing. She's already been going out with our new homeschool coordinator, and really, the teams are already asking for her. She's already been asked to help, and she's already engaging in good work, so it's really exciting.
And I think, thank you, Marcia, and I, before folks have questions, if they do, I think there's one thing to add there, is when we think about Taylor's position specifically, last year, your board saw several students come to your level to have conversations about things that were happening for them in the school setting. Each of those students was on a waiting list to access mental health services. So in each of those situations, we would have been able to, this year, if it happened, deploy Taylor to be able to support those higher-level students and those families as well. So it's, I'm pretty excited for Taylor as well.
I have a question. So I'm really happy that we have Taylor. So happy you're here, Taylor, for those higher levels. I'm curious about the lower levels, the universal. How are teachers trained or taught to recognize or help those students in the classroom?
So in the classroom, you're going to get in more to the, the social emotional learning and the identification. They might start to see a child struggle, or maybe the child's head is down, or maybe they're missing work. They'll refer to their educational support team, and they'll make a referral to an EST. The teacher does that, and then that team meets, guidance counselor, the people that know the student, and they all come together. And then it moves up the layer, so that's...
And so are teachers trained in that, or are they evaluated?
Teachers are trained in how to access the EST and the social emotional learning in each of the schools. There are different people going out into the classrooms, usually the guidance counselor, and teachers do get told how to refer to EST and why.
And I understand the referral process?
Yeah, so teachers do get a good amount of social emotional learning training. Our counselors also go out, they also have done, over the years, quite a bit of trauma training. I, I'm not sure when the last time we, might be down to sort of re-up that.
Four years ago, I think.
And then our counselors also provide social emotional lessons in each of the classrooms at the elementary level. I don't think they do it at the middle and high school level.
For the teachers?
The counselors do it in all of the classrooms at pre-K to six.
Right.
I know Larissa's doing it in the middle school this year.
Oh, yeah, and then now, right, and so now we have a new, go ahead.
There's a new SEL teacher in the middle school who's doing it here now, with both individual and group instruction in SEL.
And so at the middle school level, obviously, developmentally, kids are popping in a different way at middle school and high school than they are in elementary school. So in just the way that Marcia talked about, the referral to educational support team at the middle school now knew this year, if you have students that are really struggling and the school-based counselor isn't necessarily who they need to see, they now have access to a full-time social emotional interventionist that's doing much of that work here.
I guess my concern is catching those little nuances of kids in seventh and eighth grade, that a trained person may not recognize a teacher. And then they escalate over time, and then it gets worse in ninth and 10th grade, and that's why they end up here, right? And so are we helping teachers understand those things?
I mean, I think that, I think that's the goal, right? The whole point is, most of our elementary teachers and our middle and high school content teachers did not go to school to be counselors, right? Like, they don't know necessarily what they're looking for. So part of this is to put experts, most of them are in Marcia's lane, most of them are Marcia's teams, in the buildings to support those students who are popping and we're seeing it, right? So those are the students that are really in emergent need. And then in the meantime, we're really focusing and could always do better on doing much more proactive stuff in the school, which that's definitely happening at the elementary school, and I do think Michael's trying to get more of that.
I think sometimes when you think about that, you can think about structure and the change in the middle school being separated from the high school this year, and the change in a support room being replicated in the middle school and the high school. So now there's two special educators, an intervention specialist and an SEL person in addition in the middle school in that wing, in a support room and out about.
So last year, it was just one room for everyone? Is that how it was?
I just know that that's more now dedicated to middle school. So you have a replication in the middle school and the high school of the same supports, and through special services, I replicated them exactly the same in both areas, which increased your staffing pattern for SEL a lot. So that is a way to look at it, that although that's not teacher, when you make an environment smaller, when you increase the people to see, then hopefully you can pick up on that more. And then adding Larissa with that being her expertise in the middle school, she should do some training, some help. And as you see success, teachers jump on that because they want to do as well as each other, and everybody wants to do well. So as you start to see it, then you hope organically it grows. And of course, we're very hopeful, and we're always very excited.
And I think to Kevin's point before, back to the stuff about Tyler, last year, we learned a lot of the things that we just needed to do better, right? And so this is definitely a year of just getting better. The good news is, all of Vermont is doing this work with us, and I feel really good about the team and sort of the plan. So it's my hope that June 2024, you're going to see us in a much different place than we were June 2023.
Quick question, following what Natalie was asking. Do the paras get any kind of education or training in identifying SEL issues with kids?
Yes, they do. And actually, with our new assistant superintendent, she's rolling out a lot of PD for them that's very targeted. We're doing better at that this year, I would say.
And so they're doing most of that every early release day?
Yeah. We also, this year, added a clinical psychologist. If any of you have been here a long time, or some of you are on the board and come back, Kevin, I remember you from years ago, Bob Sol was our clinical psychologist, and he retired and left, and it's been vacant, and we now have a clinical psychologist that joined our team, which we're happy to have. So Tier Four, too, also includes a clinical psychologist for these students now. She's a PhD level, and she's trained to be a school psychologist. You'll see Kate Milliman's on the call. The reason I'll mention Kate Milliman is because she's working with Taylor, she helped with the, actually, the presentation, she reviewed it for me. She's studying to become an administrator, she's one of our school psychologists. So that's why Kate's here. Thank you for coming, Kate. So that's just the team. People are always studying under me, so they're here to watch. I don't know if you have any other questions?
Fernanda does.
Oh, Fernanda?
Hi. Sorry, it's so hard to be out here on the screen. So I guess this question is more for, for Taylor. What do you see as your challenges this year, your hopes, and how can we best support you?
I think right now, I'm just trying to get like a better sense of where I'm going to be fitting in and who I'm going to be supporting, and I'm just really hopeful. And I haven't really run into challenges, I guess. It's just, it's all, like Marcia said, it's all happened, like, I'm hoping it just happens organically, and I can kind of fall into a rhythm with the kiddos that I enjoy spending time with, which is, you know, all those kiddos in the top tier. But, yeah, I'm just, I'm really looking forward to seeing how it grows. And with the support from the whole team, it's been, it's been a really great introduction into it, so.
And Taylor is new, Taylor is new in this role. Well, this role is new, and Taylor's new in it, but she's not new to, to our district. She served as a Rutland Mental Health clinician that we stole from Rutland.
She started at Barstow, and then she asked to be transferred to Nashabie, and she was so wonderful at Barstow. Rutland Mental Health honored that, and I said that I would approve it, and she went to Nashabie. And then when we advertised this position, she has applied, and we're happy to have her. So she has experience, and the guidance counselors know her, and the other clinicians and case managers know her. And she's just fit right into this team and Rutland Northeast beautifully. It's just a wonderful thing.
Welcome aboard.
Again.
Again.
So I have a question about trends. Marcia, you've been doing this for a long time.
I, I'm retiring this year, Kevin. It's my final year, and so I will tell you that your superintendent has restructured the division a lot. She won't say that to you, but you're seeing the special services division change in anticipation of my retirement and be very strong. And all of the areas that I've cyclically been involved in will be in very good shape, and I have a Google Doc with each of the things I do and what they contain and what decisions have been made for them.
Thanks, but my question was a little different.
You can tell what's on my mind.
So, you know, the first slide said one in five kids, I think 50 million kids across the country. Your sense is 25 years ago, that number was similar, bigger, smaller, and what should we expect? And the reason I'm asking this is, you know, we're hitting this COVID cliff, we're gonna, we have to make tough budget decisions. In three, four, five years, should we be expecting to be putting more resources into this than we are now?
Well, it depends upon what our society and culture, because mental health is indicative of our general society and culture. We know we've left the extended family, we know we're isolated. COVID made that worse, but we know that our own families and our own structures are less supported, more isolated, and that we all suffer more than we used to with mental health. It's what our country has become because it's harder to live. So it would depend upon your trends in your area, in your state, your country, and the nation about what's going on, because we are just a microcosm of the larger society.
So we'll be spending more than I...
That's the honest answer, Kevin.
Yeah, and I do think Marcia mentioned it sort of briefly, and it doesn't have anything directly to do with the safety and mental health, but we did also create a homeschool coordinator position. We used to have one a thousand years ago to really...
Teresa Glantz, Fernanda will remember that name.
Yeah. To really focus on attendance and truancy. For instance, Otter Valley has historically, once a kid's 16 and they're out of school 10 days, they are sort of done. We never see them again, they're just dropped from our records. That's why OV's graduation rate is not what it should be. So we've got to do better. And then part of that is engaging our kids, but a huge part of it is engaging our families. So, and a lot of times, that person, and she's already been really successful and is a fabulous add, sometimes it's her helping with attendance and truancy, but sometimes it's her just picking up a phone, making a call to an outside agency to sort of support a family with a referral. So it's, there's, there's a lot, and I think we're all sort of nervous about the SRR cliff. What do we prioritize to be successful in our schools?
Thanks.
So I'm sorry, clearly retirement was on my mind, Kevin.
She's actually turned her letter in twice already, it's not gone in...
I haven't turned one in yet, I need to do that.
Other questions for Marcia or Taylor or Carrie? Is it Carrie?
Well, it's Kate. She won't answer any questions. She's just observing for her internship time.
Fair enough. Okay. All right. Well, thank you very much for those great presentations. All right, so we're going to move on. Our next piece of the puzzle was continued discussion and debrief regarding the professional development of August 21st, 2023. At the last meeting, I said we would talk to Pietro Lynn, who gave that wonderful professional development, and have him send out the video that he recorded. And that video is non-existent, so he thinks he may have deleted it instead of saving it. So, but he has promised to send out the deck, slideshow deck that he did, so just haven't seen it yet. So, yes, we can't continue our discussion or debrief because we still don't have any information regarding that. So I'm going to move on to governance process, unless someone really wants to talk about the PD that nobody can remember, or can't remember specifics about. School community equity letters. Do you want to talk about that?
Sure. Those should be in your packet. COVID sort of derailed the entire accountability system in Vermont. A lot of it had to do with, we know that short and long-term closures had a massive impact on education, but the Agency of Education is back to looking at school assessments. They look at academic proficiency, safe and healthy schools, educator readiness, graduation rates, and then college and career readiness, and at the 16-month post-high school graduation, what those sort of college or life outcomes look like. So they now have, and we know that we shifted to Cognia, so there's nothing for last year. So the Agency of Ed just released their snapshot, and the snapshot basically takes a look at schools and says, you know, are you doing what you need to do? This is not new, Vermont's been doing it for 50 years. Fernanda probably remembers, the school improvement plot process has been around forever. They're sort of returning to the way they used to do it. But anyways, long story short, we have three schools in RNESU who qualify for either equity supports or comprehensive supports. Obu has two. They are Lothrup and Otter Creek. Lothrup and Otter Creek are both flagged for historically marginalized students. Lothrup gets a checkmark under equity supports. Lothrup gets a checkmark saying that along the equity index, which is this really obscure way that the Agency of Ed sort of looks at everything. They look at teachers, teacher credentials to students, they sort of do this match. So Lothrup qualifies in both students noticing a gap, right, a performance gap between typically, typical peers and those that are historically marginalized and those on IEPs. Otter Creek Academy gets a checkmark for comprehensive supports, which basically is very similar to equity supports, and it says that they notice a gap for students who are historically marginalized between those and their non-historically marginalized peers. What will end up happening is, first of all, parents will be invited to participate in the continuous improvement process. It will, they all, all schools, whether you were checkmarked or not, so for instance, Otter Valley wasn't checkmarked, but by the end of the year, they will also have to have a continuous improvement plan, it's just the rules. But in the case of Lothrup and Otter Creek Academy, parents will be invited in, and teachers will be invited in to participate in the process of really looking at, is this actually a good strategy to address a gap in underperforming students and those sort of things? There's not really any money that comes with it, but what the state will do is take a look at all of our federal dollars. So SRR goes away, SRR money will matter no more, it'll go back to our CFP, our Consolidated Federal Programs, which is our Title I, Title II, Title III, Title IV dollars. So for Lothrup and OCA, they will both have to have strategies that specifically address how they are going to close the gap for students that are historically marginalized. And just as a, like, point of reference, when I say historically marginalized, I mean, the state means, students on IEPs, students that are living below the poverty line, so free and reduced lunch, and students but for race... free and reduced lunch, and students but for race or ethnicity. So that's basically what that means. You, as the board, will get lots of information throughout the year, and you will certainly see the, the final improvement plans for each school and the district by the time they're done. Yeah.
So my wife teaches kindergarten in Raxton, Rutland. And last year, actually the year before and last year, they had a part-time position, stay paid or part-time, to just work with students who were behind.
Yep.
That was her only program. That's all she did. Now it's different this year, but did we have any part in any of that?
Yeah, we, we have those in all of our schools, even Otter Valley, academic interventionists specifically to close the gap. Yep, yep, we do. And those are, here's the tough thing, right?
Did it run out?
Here's the tough thing, Brent, a lot of them are funded with Esser.
Okay, then hers ran out, so she's full-time in the school now, because that's not there anymore.
Yep. I would, I think all of Otter Valleys are funded with Esser. Lothrup has three interventionists. I think two are local, one is Esser. OCA has two interventionists. Both are Esser, I think. What's with our other school? Nashabie? Nashabie has six or eight, I can't remember, and at least half are funded with Esser.
If they don't have close to one on one, they're never going to get caught up. You put them in a classroom, they just go further behind.
Well, I mean, I think one of the things that's happened is that the needles moved, right? Like, the way, the, the grade level expectations, for instance, for second grade in 2019 are very different than what the expectations look like in 2023. So some of that is shifting already, meeting kids where they are. But yeah, in each of our schools, there's a good chunk of kids that receive intervention.
They will lower the needle so they meet these standards.
It didn't lower the needle, they just, they're, they're, we're not done, right? So by the end of this year, you'll all see the, the curriculum when it's sort of done. Isn't that they're lowering the needles, that they're reprioritizing the standards, right? They're reprior, so if you, you, for instance, might have this, keep the same standard, right? So second grade, kids will read fluently or something about phonics. And then all of the other things within that standard, they might have eased it or changed it a little. But yes, if we're being honest, what we expected from incoming second grade, second grader in 2023, they still look differently, right? Like, it's still, it is, right? And, and part of it, it goes to what Marcia says, our society is different. Things are, things are different. So yes, this will be an important conversation in the Esser Cliff conversation.
So our schools that didn't receive letters, is that because we have more infrastructure in place in those schools or is it because of a different kind of profile?
Such a good question, Kevin. The reason that they didn't get checked marked is because there isn't a gap between historically marginalized kids and everybody else. So take Lothrup, for example. They notice students not on IEPs significantly outscore students on IEPs. And in Nashabie and Otter Valley, that doesn't happen. In Otter Creek Academy, it's not an equity thing, it's comprehensive because their end size is so small. With only 80 kids in the whole school, you can't actually look at that line item or it's identifiable. I know, oh, Jeremy didn't do great on that test, right? Because he might be one of two IEP students. So OCA's looked at it a little bit different. But Nashabie and OV probably aren't checked marked because their schools are so large and the gap just isn't that big. I will say, though, the, the good news and the bad news is that, first of all, our district, and Debbie Alexander will be here in October, and she's going to present all of the assessment results. She'll go into detail with you all on the snapshot. She'll talk about the improvement planning and all of that. Our district actually made a good amount of progress last year, right? So when you look at this, so the, the snapshot is from 2022. So last year, we did actually see some, some really nice jumps. The hard part is now we're hitting the Esser Cliffs. Some of the things that we've seen some forward progress, are we going to be able to keep moving forward with? I don't, I don't know.
Basically, you're saying the ones that are on IEPs are scoring a whole lot better than the ones that are on IEPs?
There's not a noticeable gap at Otter Valley and at Nashabie, yes.
Do we know the percentage of students on IEPs in all the different schools?
Yes, like, do I off the top of my head? No, but yes.
It seems like that could correlate pretty closely.
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
It's about 12%.
Yeah, and the, the demographics of each of our school, and you all know this, are markedly different. Across the state, there's, I don't think there's a single supervisory union or district that didn't escape this or that did escape this. They either got a checkmark for their district or they got a checkmark for at least one of their schools. Like, when you look around, Rutland High School got hit, their two primary schools got hit, like, it's pretty common. I mean, misery loves company, right? But the hard part is, when you look at the scores for last year, most schools and districts saw some nice progress, finally. And now we're at the Esser Cliffs. And boards and towns are going to have to make some really tough choices.
Well, I guess the thing that is coming into my mind, and I hope this isn't the case, but I don't know for sure, is that if you have a smaller school, maybe there isn't as many people that are trying to identify students that should be on IEPs, right? So if there was a lower percentage of students on IEPs, I might say, well, maybe those smaller schools don't have the same process as a larger school where they might be better. I, I don't know, just asking.
That's not true in our district, is that? I, I don't know about across the board. Yeah.
Other questions for Kristen?
Okay.
Oh, Fernanda, yes. You're really dark up there, so that's why I can't see you that well.
I can just see your glasses.
I see, it's okay.
I can turn it up.
No, no, it's all right.
The, I, the thing that I'm trying to correlate a little bit is, and what I hear you say is that having built the supports is what's making the difference. And that the fear is how to hold on to those supports, because losing those supports isn't going to help us keep improving.
Yes.
I think it'd be nice to see some data around how, what the impact of those supports has been.
So they, that's, yeah, so that's great. Each principal and each department has already been tasked with that, Fernanda, right? So for instance, Debbie knows that for our October admin meeting, for instance, she needs to come with her, each of her instructional coaches and her interventionists with the data. And they're really making a case for what needs to continue on and what they're sort of willing to go. I'll be very honest, there are some positions that are funded in Esser that I wouldn't prioritize. And then there are some positions that we funded locally that I also wouldn't prioritize, right? So there, there definitely is room within our budget to have these conversations. But again, I would be, I would be lying if I said that I wasn't nervous about the Esser Cliff, because our district, RSU, has pushed the, the, like, the Herculean part of that load into intervention staff to support students.
Well, the teachers have to teach everybody. I mean, it's, it's so hard.
I can say that my son on IEPs is doing fabulous this year.
Awesome.
And actually, he has improved a lot over the last.
Marcia actually has a fairly, she had a lot of replacements, a lot of retirements last year, that, which is, you know, good stuff we stole from a lot of neighboring districts. She has some phenomenal new hires. Hers are not funded through Esser, but.
Well, that's good news. Okay, so moving on. Challenges and opportunities facing the OVUSD. We need to finalize our annual goals and priorities. Hopefully, everybody got my email. Because all of a sudden, I realized that since I emailed everybody, that maybe it didn't go through. Because nobody responded to me, which was, I said, don't respond. But then I was like, wait a minute. So I just had that epiphany. Anyway, so hopefully you all got it. And so I did write out what everyone had said. And so now we need to, hopefully you all took some time and thought about how we could turn those into some goals and priorities for us this year. Obviously, well, in my mind, obviously, the Esser Cliff is going to be a huge priority. So, but anyway, opening it up.
These are on page 57 in the supplemental docs.
Oh, it was in there too? Look at that. I must have sent it to Melinda. Okay.
I kind of like it the way it is. I'm not sure we.
You mean, those are our priorities?
Well, those are our challenges. You know, and, and, you know, you make a really good point about, oh, the Esser Cliff is on here, actually.
Yep.
You know, I didn't do any wordsmithing and try to come up with ways to phrase it, he says, in any other way, but I don't think it's a bad list.
Okay, Fernanda? Oh, you're, you got to turn your mic on.
I like the list, however, I will say it's a little long in order to consider it a doable list. So I would probably change priorities a little bit to the things that we can do on it versus the things that we can't. And let me bring up the list again when we're timed. For example, the slow recovery from COVID, not sure there's much we can do on that, right? The bad test scores, I don't know what that turns into action, but when I think about the Esser Cliff, the climate environmental policies, there is a few things there that I'm thinking about. Discipline, student mental health, those are the things that we have been talking about and safety. I don't know if we can make the, the, I, they're all true challenges, but I wonder if we can prioritize those a little bit differently in regards to give them more attention.
I would agree that some of these things in the framework of policy governance don't seem like, they seem like they're day-to-day issues that we are not supposed to be concerning ourselves with, not, not concerning ourselves, but like, we're making broad policies, so.
Well, and you're right, because this list was just really, what are our challenges and what are, these were not supposed to be our specific priorities. But yes, go ahead, sorry.
So, yeah, some of those things, and I'd agree with what Fernanda said, some of them are well beyond, like poverty, what are we going to do about poverty and like?
Well, I thought you were just going to give everybody like a million bucks of these, right?
We can all, yeah, just donate.
I would say, I mean, if I'm going to pick one, I'd do the number four, communication with families. That came up a lot last year, and I don't know if a goal would be to continue to improve communication.
So from us, from the board, or, I mean, I know that they're trying to do that from every school. I mean, you're getting all the emails now for all of the bulletins that go out from every school every week. So, you know, that's five emails a week that we're looking at, which is good, because I like to know what's going on in the schools, especially if my kids aren't in them. But are we also talking about our communications to our citizens, to our stakeholders?
Yeah, I mean, I, I feel like our citizens would want to hear about the threat assessment and the EOP. How are we going to communicate that to them? I think that's a pretty big one.
The board, or?
Well, I mean, what do we communicate as the board? We, we communicate through our schools, right?
Usually, I mean, if, if you really want to be honest about it, we communicate through our budget. That's how we communicate.
Yeah.
And we communicate when they're here because they're mad about something. I mean, I, I hate to say it, but that is really honestly the truth.
That's the only time you get one here.
That's the only time. I mean, the last time we got the whole community here is, you'll remember, and I remember, you were one of the main, mad, you were madder than a hornet, was when we suggested taking Pittsburgh and Nashabie and combining the two schools and sending half to Nashabie and half to Pittsburgh. We knew it was going to go over like a, a bad potato, and everybody and their uncle showed up for that one. So, you know.
But that's really not the way to get people there.
That brings up the fact that the Esser Cliff is the biggest budget item on that challenge list that I think we should really give a lot of attention to.
Yeah. Okay. I mean, what can we do about that from the board's perspective? We can get.
We're going to be making lots of budgeting decisions.
Budget, yeah.
Yeah, prioritizing.
We have to weigh that safety and mental health and supports question to the, the, you know, making those decisions. So really paying attention to what Kristen brings to us in regards to those positions that are making a difference versus things that we have invested in, but maybe aren't quite making a difference. That, that would be my suggestion. I mean, I'm, I'm, I'm interested in knowing that, and that is something that we have to, you know, put the money on, you know, on the things that we think are the most important.
Greg?
I'm remembering back to our earliest discussions of policy governance when we were, before we even decided to be policy governance. And we used to have committees in the old style. And during the training, I remember, I don't remember all the different things they suggested, but instead of the committees we had, they said, most policy governance boards have a committee that's tasked with communication and outreach. And, you know, we decided to go with this model of having these two different meetings and not having committees, but maybe we want to contemplate, you know, creating some project aspects to our board that have a communication committee that's like tasked with figuring out how and what are we going to communicate this year, whether it's about the budget or safety or whatever. But I'm just throwing it out there because I remember that in the training. So I know that our budget is our communication, but little things, like I remember when we s, I, I think there were a few years we spoke at town meetings, which we used to do in the past, but we did it a couple of years ago, or maybe we've been doing it? Did we do it last year? No, maybe COVID ruined it. But before COVID, we started again, and people really appreciated that. So I just wonder if we want to think about a targeted communication.
I will mention that, yes, we did do that, and then certain towns, I won't mention any names, said we, that the school budget did, no longer had any place within a town function. So I just want to, you know. Brandon. All right, Brandon. Brandon didn't want to hear, you know, because we had a.
I'll tell you, my town really appreciates it.
No, you're right, and my town did too.
I was like, oh, no, is it me?
No, no. The small, the small towns really do appreciate it. Bigger towns, not so much. And maybe, maybe Brandon has changed a little bit to, to be able to, to have us go up there and have a little spiel, because we used to come up with a spiel that we wanted to let the voters know before they voted, well, in some cases, after they voted, in my case, and in Whiting's case, about what the school was doing and what, where emphasis was and what, things we were doing. So we could do that again in the towns that would allow us to do that. I also think that the reporter would be very open to us having a little corner of the paper maybe once every three or four months, just to put something out there from the board about what we're doing and why we're doing it. So.
When you say towns, then like, you mean like the select board?
Yeah, select board didn't want us up there because the, the select board is different than.
We have a new select board.
Yeah, we do. There's, there's new blood on this, fresh blood on this.
And I would also say, being on the planning commission, we just did the education piece last night, and one of the goals is to support the school. So how else than allowing you to speak at?
Well, then that, that would be great, because, I mean, that's the one thing that we, we haven't had. I mean, that's kind of why we moved away from it a little bit, plus COVID, it was hard to get to meetings when they were having them in June or, you know, whenever. So, so, yeah, I mean, we could do that again.
I know a group that would love to go in the select board and have a little confrontation with them, they need to. I know most people like to go in there.
So what'd you say, Fernanda?
We should have a lemonade stand at athletic events.
Yeah, but if you're, when, when people see you wearing this lanyard, they like, they make this like huge, like, it's very, we did that at a football game. It was really fun to watch everybody, like, all of a sudden, there was like this line that nobody would cross, and they would like, so.
Well, now I'll start going to sports games.
I know, right? Exactly.
So I think Fernanda made a really good point about prioritizing, you know, this amorphous list that I, and, you know, just from the base of the discussion tonight, the, the Esser Cliff and the decisions we make are going to be enormous. And before anybody slaps my hand for leaving the lane of policy governance, you know, there, there are things as a board that, you know, I'll give you an example. I love field trips. I loved them as a kid, I loved them as a parent, I love them, I love leading them. But if I had to make the choice, I would rather see fewer field trips and more kids who needed the help getting the help so they don't fall hopelessly behind after kindergarten. So, you know, we can have a discussion, argument later about whether that's a, a board issue or an administrative issue, but, but those are the kinds of things I think we're going to be facing in, in macro terms. And that's, that's, that's the big challenge we're going to be looking at for the next year. And, and then to get back to communication. be looking at for the next year. And, and then to get back to communication with, with the public, maybe that's what we need to be communicating. There're gonna be some hard choices coming up, and there're gonna be decisions made that you don't like, and we don't like them either. But, but that's just, you know, that's the vegetary reality we're gonna be facing.
Well, and not to, I will remind you that in the last few years, when the budget comes to us, they present a budget to us. We don't necessarily, we're not involved in the nuts and bolts and about how many administrative assistance they got rid of, or how many of this we're going to keep, or, or that, because realistically, that should come from them, because they know what is needed within the schools much better than we do.
All right, I'm gonna get combative again. I think it's our job to, to set the priorities for the administration, though, and to say, this is what we want, you know, that, like I just said, I would say, I want the five-year-olds to have a chance at life, and I'm willing to give up the lights in the football field, I'm willing to give up this, that, and the other thing to get, make that happen. And I do think that's a board job.
Joe Public thinks it is.
I'd like to, can I interject something here directly related to what you're saying, Kevin? I mentioned this last time, I noticed it's not on the list, so I'm gonna bring it up again. I think we need a long-term vision plan for the districts, otherwise it's just stopgap measures of dealing with any crisis at a moment. But like, if we're communicating to parents, like, what are we communicating? We're saying, and Kevin, you're saying, this is where we wanna go, but we don't know where we wanna go. We don't have a plan of like, this is how we envision our district, and this is where we wanna get to, and now we can fill in the pieces of how to do that. And so like, I think that ties into like the Esser Cliff and making those decisions about what do we keep, what do we get rid of, what do we like prioritize? It doesn't make sense to do those things without saying, this is where we wanna be in X number of years, and how do we get there? Cuz otherwise, it's just, we're dealing with the moment at the moment all the time, and there's not, I don't feel like that's gonna create a sys, if we don't have a vision of the system we want, we're not gonna be able to create a system that we want.
When you're creating a budget, Kristen, do you have a vision for what you expect? I mean, you're not looking at dollar signs, you're looking at making sure kids have what they need in order to be successful, correct?
Yeah, and we look at it school by school. So we ask each principal, starting actually at next week's meeting, to come in with priorities and their vision for 24, 25, and what are the things that they're prioritizing. So they come in front of all central office, so all central office administrators, and then we have conversations about each of those schools, and then central office comes together in the beginning of October to talk about that and talk about the district and what we're focusing on and prioritizing. But to what Jeremy said, we also believe that we don't, I know what my principals say is important in their buildings, but we have talked quite a bit about the fact that we don't really know what students want to see out of their school, we don't really know what families wanna see out of their school, certainly board members. So that mission, vision, strategic planning thing, I think post-reorganization, right, like post the merger, and then you add in a pandemic, a lot has changed in the world. And so, yeah, I think that those are important conversations.
I think like, one big example of this for me is we've talked about doing a district middle school building, a giant building for whatever, $25 million. But we're just saying, we don't have enough space in the building, so let's stick this thing in here. We're not really saying, how does that fit into the bigger picture of our district and how to achieve the real ends of like educating our kids and having them leave as happy and healthy and employable and ready for the next steps of life as possible. It seems like a lot of our focus has just been on logistics of the moment without it fitting into a bigger picture of getting kids where, like you were just saying, Kristen, where they wanna be and where parents want them to be. And I, I feel like we're, we're kinda, yeah, playing pin the tail on the tongue, on the donkey in the dark.
I mean, I think for, for a board, besides the budget being the like single most representation of what your values are, your global end statement is really you saying, this is what we exist for, this is what we wanna create. But when schools think about mission and vision, they are not saying a global end statement, right? That's fairly nebulous and is not something people could easily sort of cite or have a conversation about. You want your mission and vision to be something that everyone knows is hanging on your walls is what we want for our schools and our kids. And right now, ours is so old, it's the compass that half the people don't even know what character, competence, creativity, what, what, what those are anymore.
When was the last time we had our vision board? I mean, you were in charge of it, so that was a while ago.
2007, I think. Is that true?
You were our chair of that board, the, when we were looking at middle school, we can't, we came with the middle school.
We didn't come up with that compass that you're speaking.
No, 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 that, that was John Castle.
Yeah, I was gonna say.
But the last time that we kind of came up with our plan, and then of course it imploded with, with.
Oh yeah, COVID.
COVID imploded it, yeah.
It completely derailed things.
Yeah.
Just as we were talking architecture stuff.
So like, it was 2017, 2018?
Yep.
Was when we came up with it?
And, and 2019, I mean, it was right.
Yeah, I mean, we were talking about that stuff, and then when COVID hit, everything went to pot.
Yeah, it was like a year and a half.
Right, cuz it took us a year and a half to do that. And we could do it, I suppose we could do it again, but, I mean, it took a lot, and I'm fine with work, but, you know, coming up with questions to present to community members and students and all of that, to come up with what a vision is, but, and, and like Kristen said, our vision really is our ends. I mean, we want these kids to be able to leave here successful in whatever way that is.
That's how I've been thinking about it, is that those, that's, those are our goals, the ends. So what are we gonna prioritize this year, right? That's what we're, we kinda need to focus on. Do we have to come up with a statement?
No, I mean, we can, I mean, it's just that whatever we do, we wanna make sure we prioritize it.
Yeah.
You know, is the Esser Cliff gonna be our priority? Well, it kinda has to be in some ways. But is there something else that in our mission and vision, when we look at that, those goals, and we look at all of the different parts and pieces of it, is there something that we wanna focus on?
And I think.
Yeah, go ahead.
It goes hand in hand, and I may just be restating what is already obvious from what we've been told tonight about mental health and social emotional learning.
Okay, yeah.
But the Esser Cliff goes hand in hand with that goal of supporting kids in the, in, in those areas and supporting our schools. So, yeah, it really is part of our, both our long-term vision, but also our shorter-term vision in terms of like what we have to budget in order to survive this cliff, which we've been warned about for years. So that has been a longer term.
Right, and I don't, I don't think in this climate right now, any of us think that building a middle school is a smart idea, which is probably why we haven't brought it back to the board.
Yeah, right. So much changed between when we were talking about it and now, it, you know, it, it seems like that's a conversation.
Well, I just don't think that we could go out to the community and say, hey, let's do a $25 million bond and build a new.
For the record, I still think it's a great.
I know, I know.
It would be a $40 million bond.
You know, whatever, but whatever it is, but, you know, I mean, I, I think that's why we haven't broached that back up. I mean, I could bring it up once a year, hey, what do you think about a middle school? You know, we could make sure we put that on our work plan. You know, and I think we've been, we've been very fortunate in the fact that we are one of the few school districts that haven't lost students. You know, everyone keeps talking about dwindling enrollment, dwindling enrollment. We are busting at the seams almost everywhere. So.
True.
So one of my long-term frustrations is that we use this language, you know, we want every kid to be successful. And it's true, and we wanna support every kid. But that kind of hides the political problems, and I'm using the term politics broadly here too, that some people say we want every kid to be successful means, well, why don't we have, you know, 15 more AP courses? Why aren't we, why aren't we pushing, pushing, you know, kids to, to, you know, go to MIT science camp or whatever? And other people say, and I'm one of the people who say this, is that supporting kids means we need a better shop, we need, we need more options for kids who aren't going to college, we need to think about, you know, retaining kids in Rutland County. So those are two kind of very different ideas riffing off the same term, and I think we tend to do that a lot. We disguise our problems by saying, we wanna support every kid, we want every kid to be successful. Some people say, well, supporting every kid means we need to really emphasize helping LGBTQ plus kids. And other people say, supporting kids means that we need to, you know, emphasize IEPs more. And every, and, and most of us on the board would say, well, all those things are wonderful, but, but it's, it's our job to, to try to figure out, you know, this year or the next five years, wherever, what's more wonderful than those other things, because we can't, we can't prioritize everything, we can't budget for everything. And those are tough discussions. And, and, you know, like the middle school idea, I think it's a, I think it's a great idea, we'd have, we have to, to be able to convince people it's a great idea for, for specific reasons. And, you know, people, people act selfishly, and I don't mean to be that, to be pejorative, because, because we all do, I know, I know, you know, everybody has interests. I want my family to succeed in certain ways. I want my town to be the best town, you know, all that kind of stuff. And, and convincing people to do things that aren't obviously in their immediate interests is, 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 you know, the job of political leadership. And, and I think it's the board's job, you know, in politics broadly conceived. I'm not saying we need to form a party, I'm saying we need to talk to people and convince them this is the direction our community needs to go. And it's tough.
Wanna go ahead?
Generally, I feel like the attitude at Honor Valley is, I mean, a lot of people don't like it here, I'm not gonna lie. Personally, I feel like it suited me very well, and I think it's a great school with a lot of opportunities. It's not perfect, there are a lot of problems, but generally, I think it is a very great school. I came from New York, and it was just a huge school. Then moving to this smaller setting, it, it felt much more personally focused. And there are a lot of opportunities, like in New York, there wasn't the, like, anything near the Muslammoo program that is phenomenal here that helps a lot of students that don't traditionally, do well in traditional classroom settings. And there's so many other after-school activities, sports, the walking stick theater program. And then during flex time in the day, there's a lot of other opportunities other than just doing your work, certain clubs, support groups and such. Generally, I feel like there are a lot of opportunities at Honor Valley. It's not, which there could be more, like especially for non-traditional classroom settings. But generally, I feel like there's a lot of opportunity.
Yeah, to sort of piggyback off of that, I definitely do think that we have a good variety of opportunities. There are opportunities for kids who, like the, are more interested in trades with collaborating with Stafford, along with Muslammoo, who don't wanna be in a classroom all the time and are more interested in wilderness and like going on field trips and stuff. But there are also, we do have a couple AP classes, again, like there, there could be more. And I also do think that this school overall has just great opportunities, but we do have a bad reputation because of some of the people, just a certain, I think, a certain percentage of our students not seizing the opportunities given to them, which ends up giving Honor Valley a bad name. I think it's more so people not wanting to pursue opportunities rather than a lack of opportunities, personally.
Okay. Brett?
I, I keep finding myself going back to the same question in my head, which is, are we as a board, are we doing a good job? Are we effective as a board? And I think the reason why I keep finding myself going back to that is because if I'm really honest, I don't think we are. Like, I feel like we come in here and we, we go over our policies and we kinda just rubber stamp things, and we never really seem to find our footing with what we're trying to do. And I, I mean, for me, having a vision is great, but if we're not an effective board, then what's the point?
Okay.
You know what you think would make us more effective?
Ask that, huh? I don't, I don't know. I, I mean, like, I, for me, I feel like we're so focused on what has been done in the past, right? We, we review the policy and we say, okay, yep, we still agree with that, or here's what we think might be different, but we're really not looking towards the future, right? So like, I think, this is a great example, you brought this up last time, with, with an environmental policy, right? Like, is that something that's important to us? And where in our schedule do we have that conversation, right? And I'm not saying like, that's, it's probably not the most important thing compared to what the other things that are going on for our students right now, but that's a great example of something that would get missed with the kind of the way that, at least from what I've seen, the way that we kinda go through the process. So I, I feel like there's not a lot of runway to make forward changes. I feel like we're kind of just stuck.
Oh, go ahead. Yep.
Well, I, I wanna push back a little bit against the notion that we're not effective. I mean, having been on the board a while, I mean, I think the change when you're dealing with a board this size and with, you know, issues, it's a, it's a slow-moving ship that we're steering. So we're not a motorboat, you know, doing a slalom course. We're a big ship being steered very slowly, but deliberately, we have our, our, you know, our ends, and we have our policies, and yes, it seems laborious and it may seem pointless, but it does actually guide various aspects of our overall organization. And it gives each component of our organization direction. We definitely task the administration with providing us information on various aspects of what's going on in the district. I feel personally, like we get a good amount of information about test scores or social emotional learning and behaviors and programs. We get a lot of different pieces of info and from very, you know, different schools. To me, that seems like we are getting a lot of good information, and we get it on a regular basis. There's a, you know, there's a rhythm to it. So we know what's going on, we can make informed decisions from that, but we also, being policy governance enables like the people who are hired to do their job to do their job without us making executive decisions that we, it's not our, it's not our responsibility, that's not where we're meant to act. And it feels like we have a plan, it's just that the level at which we are operating is this, it's hard to see maybe the progress, because it's incremental and it's slow-moving, but we're, I can see, I can see that we've done well through the pandemic, I can see that we came through it, I can see the things that we've cited tonight about, you know, enrollments, I can, we have good staff, I can see that we've hired excellent administrators in the past few years. We hear from students who are citing things they really appreciate about this district and this school. And then I have three kids in the school who seem to be having an okay time. I mean, that's just a small, you know, snapshot, but it's, and I think all of that comes out of what we do and what we deliberate here. I, I think, you know, we do get things accomplished. I think, you know, we do get things accomplished, but, and there's always room to add, you know, more things to our plan as we think of them.
I agree. You summed it up very well. I think it's, you got to really think about what our role is on the board, right? And I think your idea of what the board is, is to create all these great plans and to act on them, but that's not really our role. Our role is to oversee everything, and the people we hire bring the information to us and we say, okay, that looks good, that looks good. I mean, if there was anything that they, that Kristen brought to us, or Marcia, or anyone that we thought wasn't right or should be, I don't know, that's where we provide our opinions. That's when we need to speak up. That's, we're doing an evaluation every single time we're here. We're evaluating the work of what's happening. That's our job. And then we have few decisions that we have to make about budget and, you know, the things that aren't really fancy or sexy, but that's our job. So I agree with Barbara. I think we're doing what we're supposed to be doing.
Brett?
I think the thing I would say to that is, we, in a way, you're both right. But sometimes I think we're hiding behind our policies or we're hiding behind policy governance, or we're using that as an excuse to not do something, when in the reality, we can write whatever policy we want. If we wanted to, we could write any policy that we want.
As long as we can pass it.
Right. But we don't ever do that, right? We always just say, well, we're a policy governance board. That's not really our job. Well, our job is to write the policy. So.
I don't agree.
I guess I'm not sure what kind of policy that you're referring to. Like, if you're talking about policies that are happening within the school, that's not us.
That's not our job.
What I would say is, everything that Barbara said is happening in spite of us, right? All the great things that are happening in the schools, we are doing very little to influence that, other than saying, Kristen, go do your job, do a great job.
Well, then we just did the best job of all because we hired her.
Because we hired the right person.
So.
I'm gone with the Ester Cliff.
I know.
Good luck.
I do think there are times where we hide behind policy governance. We use that as an excuse for things where we could do a better job, right? Like, last year, we could have been more proactive on things like safety. We could have reviewed our policies. We could have stepped in. We could have taken more of a leadership role instead of saying, we have a policy on that, it's up to the district. We could have done a better job.
You mean a better job directing those who are supposed to review it?
After we had.
Right? Because it's not our job to write the policy. It's our job to make sure that it's happening, right?
But after we had an incident, right, where it was very clear to everyone that we had a safety issue, right? At our next meeting, we could have reviewed that policy. We did not.
Or.
So is that us doing our job?
Or is our job to follow up with Michael Ruppel and say, have you put the curtains in yet? And we do it every single week. Because our job isn't to put the curtains in. Our job is just to make sure that.
We're not allowed to follow up with Michael. Our job is to talk to Kristen.
Well.
Has he put those up yet?
No. I'm not. I'm up three times.
I'm not trying to split here. But I think it's an important distinction.
Yeah.
That's interesting.
I just, I'm working with policy.
We know it's you.
We have trustees. They don't do anything. They adopt, they adopt the budget every single year and they provide a vision.
Yes.
And we bring interesting things, but the president doesn't.
We're not going to fight amongst ourselves.
I just wanted to say, I think we did review the safety policy. I mean, at some point, because I remember you were making excellent suggestions about terminologies and, because you bring expertise to this. So we, we were talking about our safety policies, whether it was, may or may not have been in response, but of course, we don't, well, I don't think our role is to be reactionary to a specific incident. It's to take, I mean, again, this is my opinion, but it's based on what I've seen and learned about policy governance, is that if you, if you keep pivoting every time there's an incident, you are not steering the ship.
So you're going down like the Titanic.
Right, yeah. So iceberg, and I don't want to belabor the metaphor, but, you know, you take the input and you discuss and you think about and you review the policy, and if there's something that needs to be changed, maybe, but also what I'm hearing tonight is that there's been improvement. Like, the report we got from Tyler indicates, it's also a response to some state laws, but nevertheless, there's improvement about communication and about the protocols and the, you know, this is a really comprehensive document, which I appreciate, but we didn't create it, and I don't even know if we made it happen, but it happened. Here it is. And going forward, things will probably be better in that specific thing that was troublesome last year, which is how you learn from mistakes or how you learn from bad things that happen is, right? Like, you know, there was a flood in 2011 and Brandon, you know, the, things got flooded. They put in a culvert. This year, we didn't get flooded. I mean, you learn, right? So if something goes wrong, we make a change. But maybe we aren't the ones making the change. We're talking about like where it can happen. That's, and I think sometimes we want to have our hands, like, in the dirt, and that's not our job. We're like the landscape, we're the landscape architects there. There's no different metaphor to throw at you.
So there's something inherently deceptive in that, that, and, you know, a word like deceptive, I'm not trying to say that we're lying to people or tricking people or anything like that. What I'm saying is that when 40 people show up to speak to us about something they're deeply concerned with, and they wouldn't show up otherwise, and they're worried about their kids, you know, and we were getting legal advice, well, you can't respond, you know, don't even make any faces. Your job is just to listen. That's not what people think we're doing. They think they're talking to the select board or they're talking to a congressional committee or something, and we're going to say, okay, we're going to write a law to respond to this. We're going to, we're going to instruct the superintendent to do something about this. So that's what I think is deceptive, this, or maybe it's just, maybe I should use another word and say misinterpretation. People think what the school board does and what we are talking about, what we do, and I'm blaming policy governance, are very, very different. So maybe we should say to people, hey, you know, we're not going to say a word when you come and speak to us, and we're not actually going to do anything except maybe, you know, elbow the superintendent to take care of something.
So that's not true. And were you at the training with Pietro in August?
I certainly was.
Was not.
It ended very early.
Was pretty quick. So it was quick. It was supposed to be two hours. He ended in 45 minutes, or hour, it was an hour, I think. Yeah, it was an hour. Because I was listening through the phone. Yeah, so, I mean, he, I almost think he needs to come back and talk to us all again because I think, you know, you're, and not just you, Kevin, there's other members of the board who feel like when someone comes in and they're mad about something, that we are supposed to have this back-and-forth dialogue. That just opens us up to more because the more and more I heard of those 40 people that were here last year, they were taking two separate instances and mashing them together and saying, this is what happened. And as we talked to them, they realized that too. And then all of a sudden, it was all about safety. Safety, safety, safety. Oh, you know, so I think that we need to, as a board, make sure, maybe that's what we need to communicate to the community, is that, yes, we will listen to you, and, you know, it's not like we're not going to do something about what they came to us to talk about. Sometimes I'll send it in a let's talk or whatever, reach out.
It's called reach out.
Reach out, reach out, reach out, and we'll respond in that way. Or I'm going to say, you know, can you send your concern to the superintendent because she has more information and can take care of your concern? Because again, sometimes some of the things that happen that people want to talk to us about, if they come back to this board as a, and we need to sit as that quasi-judicial board and make a determination, we can't because all of a sudden, we heard it and we talked to them in a back-and-forth conversation. And so then you have to recuse yourself.
I think you're misinterpreting what, certainly that last year, that meeting last year, I didn't have any magic wand to wave. I was kind of grateful not to have to say anything. But I do think that what people think we do and what we are is very different from.
Well, things have definitely changed from the school boards of past where, you know, someone came in or someone pulls you aside and says, hey, Kevin, you got to do something about that history teacher, you know, they're killing my kid or whatever, and you go in and you magically fix it. We don't have that ability anymore.
I don't think we ever had that ability.
Well, but still, the idea is that we can't fix every problem that comes to us, and it has to go through that chain of command. And we may not like it, but at least we can send them to wherever we hope they're going to get the information that they need. And hopefully, someone follows up and said, hey, did you talk to so-and-so or did you, you know, get a resolution? Hopefully, they said yes. Sometimes they say, no, I got sick of it. You know, when they told me I had to talk to the superintendent, I said, forget it, I'm not doing it. And that's when you have to press and say, no, you need to speak to the superintendent. That's how this is going to get fixed for you.
Sometimes people just need a platform to speak.
Right. And sometimes that's what needs to happen too.
They want to come and they want to let everybody know what their concerns are.
Right.
With the superintendent present and the principal.
Can I make a point?
Of order?
Well, no, 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 not a point of order. No, just another point. When I first joined the board, it was before we had adopted policy governance, and I went to one of those training things about like, you know, the role of the board. And that was where it was clarified to me, like, what a person's role on the board is, and that you don't make these kinds of decisions that the superintendent makes or the principal makes. So it's like, we can't do certain things. It has nothing to do with policy governance. We're just not, like, that's not our role at all, regardless of our governing structure. So we can't be asked to respond directly to things that are supposed to go through the superintendent or the principal or the teacher. I mean, and then that aside, we don't want to, I mean, I personally don't want to set a precedent where people just come to me with all their grievances when they should be following, like, no, talk to the teacher first, no, talk to the principal. I mean, that's how it should go.
But they should be, but they should be able to come to you and just say, I've got this problem and you can direct them. We all as board members should have that ability, and that definitely is important, that we direct them to whatever layer they need to get to.
But yes, you're right. That's an important clarification, but not to think that I personally.
No, not that you're going to decide that, no.
Yeah.
I sometimes circle back and say, did you get, did you get a resolution? And if I hear no, then I'm like, well, did you go to the next level? You know, but I'm not trying to solve it. I'm just trying to get them to understand how the chain of command continues. And not that Otter Valley wouldn't do anything about it. It's, you need to keep going. Sometimes you have to fight a little longer and a little harder, so. So, it's after eight o'clock. What are our priorities? Do we have any? I mean, I think we just, I think I heard a lot about the Ester Cliff. We definitely know we're going to be prioritizing our budget. And as to the other things on the list, I, you know, it's whatever you guys think.
I'm going to reiterate, I'd love to see a long-term plan. So I'm looking at our global ends now, and it's a list of attributes. It's not a plan. So it's academic proficiency, communication, critical thinking. These are all the things we expect students will graduate with, and it's just a list of attributes. It doesn't, doesn't, it's not a roadmap. And that's what I'm asking us to create, is a roadmap. And I'm talking the high-level roadmap, or maybe it's directing the superintendent to create a roadmap. Maybe that fits in with policy governance better.
So what kind, I guess my question to you is, what level of roadmap do you want? I mean, do you want a roadmap that starts in kindergarten saying, if you take the left way, you're going to, you know, go the college route, and if you take the right, you're going to do this?
No.
Or when you hit seventh grade, you know, you have to, if you don't take woodworking, you're not going to end up in trades?
No, no, I'm, that's like, not where we belong. I'm not trying to get us to make a map of specific, like, how any student navigates. I'm saying, big picture, in 10 years, this is, or whatever the number is, I'm just making up 10 years, this is how we envision our district. We'll have students who are fulfilling these attributes, but all, I don't even know what the things are to put on that. Like, I think it would be outreach to the community to say, what do you want to see our district look like from a very broad perspective, not a, what classes do you want? Give me like a bullet point list of all the specific details. I'm saying a framework that all our other decisions fit into, like, if, so, right now, we have a list of challenges with attendance. Kids aren't attending school. So that's like, one of those things we say, in 10 years, we envision that we will, like, most kids will be attending school. And then it's not our job to create the exact activities involved in that plan, but it would help guide the superintendent to then create all the activities, plans, and like, specific details of how to get there.
So since the super.
I want to hear from Greg. Sorry.
Sorry to bring up the task force again, but it was a five, 10-year planning thing that we did for a year and a half. So the tough thing about new board members coming in and going is, this board, we could all do this work, and then some of us will leave, and then the next board will think that, and this is how slow things happen. And then we'll say, oh, why isn't there a five, 10-year plan? There kind of was. COVID happened. We just need to re, you know, envision, how does this fit?
Maybe that's the thing, we go back to that.
But it's not that we haven't, and it was, we were thinking about concrete things as well as kind of things that you're talking about as well. But we're in charge of all these buildings. There's some serious logistical things with our teachers and staff able to do their tasks, and is there enough space for kids to succeed? So by looking at all these buildings, we kind of envisioned this middle school model, and it ended up solving a lot of the issues that were throughout the district, and that's why we came up with that. We reached out to the community and came up with, the idea of adding on here was the general consensus originally, when we had meetings with the public, because the idea of a totally separate building seemed, expense was not something the district would support. But anyway, I'm just, I just wonder if we should go back to looking at that, just.
Well, we could always reinstitute the task force and put you back in charge, Greg.
Man, back together.
Was that a motion, Lori?
I don't, I don't make motions, so, but someone could say, I make a motion out of that. And we could have board members, but, I mean, the thing that we did was we, that task force was not just board members, it was also community members. And we did a lot of, you know, we could reinstitute that and see what comes of it.
Well, I think the board can look at.
You want to look at, so do you want me to bring back in October, the task force stuff? I mean, I don't want to do it next meeting because that seems, but we could, we could have the old plan.
What if, I mean, what if we put a survey out? A simple survey?
You got to get people to fill it out.
What, you do, you make it simple. One question, what is your one goal for the school board this year?
Oh, you know what they'll say? I want my kids to be happy. I want my kids to be happy.
Then that's all we do. Then, like, we focus on.
Achievable.
I know, right? But that's, but that's not the answer that you as a board member are looking for. I mean, sure, we want kids to be happy, but.
We speak for the people, right? So we're here to represent the community. I don't know.
Kevin?
Hey, Fernanda. So, go ahead.
You sure?
Yeah.
All right, Fernanda? Turn your, turn your mic back on.
It does sound a little bit like we, as a board, are also feeling a little bit derailed by the whole COVID interruption. And it may not be a bad idea to revisit where we were standing before all that happened. So if there were plans in progress that we kind of abandoned, it may not be a bad thing. We may not have to go all the way back to the beginning, but maybe just revisiting and kind of seeing that. My other, being a new member on the board and not having the history of what's happened in the last five to 10 years, you know, I've been out of the district for like 17 years, so I know what's way back, but not current, more current. I would love to just sit with that global, what do we call it? The global.
Global ends.
The global ends and kind of think through the board head, what are our parts in that global end, you know, thing that might help us envision? So I do, I have heard some environmental concerns, policies that we don't currently have. That might be a priority for us to kind of see how those fit into the picture. I have heard things about, you know, expanding the opportunities that we give students to learn in different ways. That can be part of the global ends, you know, piece and how the board relates to that. So I guess I'm just, as I hear people. So I guess I'm, I'm just, as I hear people and being new and not having a lot of information about this, I'm feeling like there has been a little bit of a derailment in the process of our role and it may be nice to just kind of re, um, reestablish that. That's, that's what I'm hearing, but I don't, I may be off.
Kevin, did you want to say something?
Yeah, especially since the superintendent's here. And I know she spends, has a lot of free time.
Yeah, we do lunch every day.
I wonder if it would be useful, and tell me, tell me if this is a crazy imposition on you, um, to hear from the superintendent what a one-year plan, what a five-year plan, you know, what, at what point should a, a middle school be, um, something we're looking at? Is that 10 years down the road? Is that something we need to do urgently? One of the most useful meetings for me last year, I think it was in the winter, was when the principals came in and talked about what they, what their vision for the schools was. I found that very, very helpful. It directed a lot of my thinking. And since we are a policy board, for better or worse at the moment, hearing from the superintendent, what, what her vision for the district is in one, five, 10, whatever implements, increments, would be very useful to me. And it, it would give us a, a, a beginning spot to say, okay, you know, uh, no, we like this idea, maybe we want to tweak this vision in a different direction.
So this is what I'm thinking. Tear it apart at your leisure. At our second October, in our second meeting in October, we will bring back the task force outcomes that we had. And we will also ask you, since you'll have them beforehand as well, maybe you can take a look at them.
I did, I don't love them.
Okay, well, that's good. And then you can talk about what your one to five-year plan is because 10 years is too long because education is constantly changing and I, we figured that out at the task force the last time, that 10 years was too long. You, you could not put it, any, you couldn't wrap your head around what was going to happen in 10 years. Five years was pushing it.
Although most of the strategic plans that are done in education at this point are 10-year plans, you just have outcomes at year one, year three, year five, and then you sort of revise it. That idea, sort of to Jeremy's and Kevin's a little bit, is what the administrators and myself are really trying to do this year. That's why we're doing the community forums and we're trying to go out and get kids. Like, we want to know, what do you want us to prioritize? What do you think our goals and our priorities should be? So regardless of whether the board decides to pick it up, probably administratively, we will have a 10-year sort of plan.
How long does it take to plan and, and sell, for lack of a better word, and to tax and to hire an architect and to build the school? I mean, how far out is that whole process? Is that a 10-year process?
Well, we need a, we need a communication plan just in the beginning of that.
Yeah, just to get people to wrap their head around it because otherwise everyone's going to be like, no.
We as a board need to be all in and then go out and excite the community. So you have to, you have to time that into it.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
You got to tell them at the very beginning that you're even thinking about that.
Yeah, because it's, that's something you can't just spring.
Right, you can't just spring up, you, oh, we got this great, you know, yeah.
I mean, the good news is, it is in our past. We did talk about it four years ago, but still.
Well, and it's just going to be another big sell because of, just because of the way the economy is and everything out there right now.
What's happening in the school right now is going to give us some useful information, the way you've organized the middle school being more separate. That may give us some insights.
I've gotten trapped repeatedly. Have you tried to go?
In the middle?
Like, I'll try to go down one, oh, I can't get that one.
Wait, I thought the doors weren't actually locked, though.
No, some of them are.
Oh, I thought, so some are, but.
Yeah, not all.
For egress purposes.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
They can be, some of them are.
Yeah, well, they're, I can't, I can't open them. Someone must be able to.
All right, so we're going to just continue this discussion. I guess we're just going to continue to finesse our annual goals and priorities. At our second October meeting, maybe we'll do some at the first one, too. Our next meeting is October 3rd here at the library at 6:00. And at this time, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
I moved. Second.
Okay, goodbye.